Good evening, and welcome to the Tuesday, March 4th Regular City Council Meeting. With that, DeStiles Elliott, our city clerk, would you please call roll?
Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Delara.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerin.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither. Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Councilmember Gaither and Wright have communicated that they are not able to attend. If I could entertain, have a motion for them to be excused?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So on to community announcements. First up is, we're excited to announce that Social Washington City's Employee Benefit Trust just announced that Pullman earned the 2025 Well City Distinction by making an outstanding commitment to employee health. Each 2025 Well City recipient receives a 2% premium discount on their ADBC Employee Benefit Trust Active Medical premiums in 2026. Last year, the city saved $9,330 due to this discount. This is the 21st year in a row the Pullman has been a Well City. Thank you to all city employees, leadership, and members of the City Pullman Wellness Committee for contributing to this award and prioritizing healthy choices both inside and outside the workplace. For street sweeping, as we inch closer to spring, we're starting to see street sweepers around the city. This is your reminder to utilize legal off-street parking when available and bring garbage cans or other obstructions off the streets so the sweepers have a clear path. When possible, we'll use social media to let the community know where our street sweepers will be, which will give community members the opportunity to move obstructions and sweep small natural vegetation debris off the sidewalk and into the street in time for sweeping. You can also view the street sweeping schedule at pullman-wa.gov/sweeping. For parks and recreation, this is your opportunity to vote for movies in the park. There are three days left to cast your vote for this year's movies in the park. You can go to pullman-wa.gov/movies by March 7th to see this year's options and vote. The Pullman Aquatic Fitness Center will be closed for regular maintenance Saturday, March 8th through Sunday, the 16th. Regular hours resume on Monday, March 17th. And at the Neil Public Library, VITA IRS certified volunteers will be offering free help on federal tax returns on Saturday, March 22nd and Saturday, March 29th from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Neil Public Library. And for more listings of other community events, please visit the city's tourism page at visitpullman.com/events. At this time, I'd like to recognize one of our council members, Ann Parks, as Ann joined myself and Tremaine Gaither in the inaugural cohort of the Washington Collaborative Executive Leaders Institute. This four-month immersive training focused on the collaborative leadership skills necessary to tackle the real-world challenges facing Washington communities. And the challenge that the group is focusing on is reversing the impact of social isolation by developing more community events and connection opportunities. And I have this nice certificate of achievement award for Ann.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[277.64][277.64](APPLAUSE).
It's always good to see the additional training. I have another one of those also for Tremaine Gaither, and I'll get that to him at another time. And so lastly, what I'd like to do is call on Public Works Director Sean Wells to give a quick update on the high-water event that happened on Sunday, February 23rd, as well as a status on our famous Pine Street Bridge. With that, Sean.
Good evening, everyone. Sean Wells, Public Works Director. The high-water event, yes, that's happened a week ago or so. And what we saw on that with South Forks, the Palouse River, wound up peaking at 7.64 feet at about 11:30 p.m. Sunday night. Now, prior to that, Saturday, if you recall, we still had snow on the ground. The weather got up to about 50 degrees on Sunday. It was a little warmer, or cooler on Saturday, about 45 or so on Saturday. But during that, we also had a rain event. So it was kind of a double whammy what was happening. The rain event was coming at us, the weather was warming up, the snow was melting, and we had a lot of runoff coming into our conveyance systems and our streams at that point. The Pine Street Pedestrian Bridge, which was built in 2005, was actually designed to do what we've seen. It was designed at a certain flooding event or high-water event to actually lift up, kind of float, and turn away so that it would pivot against the north bank there and set down as the floodwaters receded, to the point where we could essentially, in theory, pick it back up and put it back on its foundations. It did that, kind of. The water didn't get high enough for it to really complete what it was designed to do. So it is sitting about eight to 10 feet off of its foundation supports there and obviously blocked off for pedestrian traffic at this time right now. We believe it shifted somewhere in the 7 o'clock to 8 o'clock hour Sunday evening. At that point, looking at the stream gauge events, the stream gauges were anywhere from 7.25 to 7.46 feet in elevation. We hadn't seen that high level of water since the 2017 event, when it hit 7.03 feet, and the bridge did not move in that event. So this is really the first time that the bridge has ever done what it was kind of designed to do in high-water marks since it was actually constructed in 2005. Staff's currently meeting tomorrow to actually figure out a plan of attack on what to do. We need to go and do an investigation of the abutment, the bridge itself, to make sure that everything is kind of reusable. If it is, that might be the best-case scenario. We can get in with possibly a crane, pick it up, put it back where it was. Depending on that, that might be the best that we can do. But I don't have a timeline for when that can happen yet. We're still looking at the rest of the spring, where we could have high-water events that follow this. So we're trying not to go after it too hot and heavy and quick here. We want to take our time with this one and make sure that everything's good before we actually do some work on that. Our worst-case scenario, I don't want to talk about it because this is like a premonition for me, but should the bridge or the abutments need to be replaced, we would come back to council at that time for decisions on what we need to do for that. So for that, I can take any questions you have, but it was just kind of a quick update on what happened and where we're at.
Councilmember Weller.
Thank you so much for the update. I had a question regarding areas surrounding the bridge. Was there any damage with the bridge moving and so on?
We didn't see any other damage around the bridge in that location. It was definitely all water moving. I think we've all seen photos and videos of what happened there, but we didn't observe any other damage to that or any of the other structures throughout the city. We did have some minor culvert erosion in certain areas, where it was just kind of more of a flash-down-the-street type of thing, but those were minor in nature.
Any others? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is non-agenda-related community comments. This agenda item is the first of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials. Specifically, this item is reserved for public comments, concerns, or other information not related to a previous public hearing or final action item on the C agenda. This item for comments is not to exceed 30 minutes in total. Comments are to be directed to the mayor or the city council as a body. No comment should be directed to individual council members. At that time, if anybody would like to provide public comment, if you'd like to come forward to the microphone, and each will have two minutes. And if you have handouts, if you can provide that to the city clerk, and then she can pass them to the council.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city leaders. I'm Mackenzie Brummett, and here today representing Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories. Many of you are aware that SEL employs over 6,700 people around the world. Our company invents, designs, and builds products and systems used to protect critical infrastructure in over 170 countries. For over 40 years, we've been headquartered here in Pullman. Yesterday, SEL founder, Dr. Schweitzer penned an open letter to our neighbors in Canada and Mexico highlighting the mutual benefits of free trade. He shared how it has enhanced our political and economic freedom. In his letter, Ed states, "We're united by free trade with much more in common than indifference. Our differences in culture, language, climate, and history are to be celebrated and appreciated. There are roots." The current disruption in free trade heightened by today's newly implemented tariffs on Canada and Mexico is concerning. Ed also reminds us that we know we're all better when we embrace economic and political freedom. We suffer when we're cut off from one another. Many of you are familiar with the SEL headquarters building. For many years, we have flown the flag of the United States. As of today, we have added two more. We now proudly wave the flags of Mexico and Canada. SEL remains committed to making electric power safer, more reliable, and more economical. We have and continue to reach out to our federal representatives to make them aware of the impact of the tariffs. Dr. Schweitzer's letter can be found online in the SEL newsroom. I also have provided copies for you today. If you have questions about how the tariffs are impacted, SEL, please reach out to me. We'll be happy to share more details. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide public comment? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've never been to a council meeting before, so I might be a little stuttery because I haven't really prepared anything, two minutes or otherwise. But I work in mental health. I'm here as not representing anybody except just a concerned citizen with the previous person's concerns about the disruption. I am worried about how community action, energy assistance, other safety guards for our vulnerable citizens may be impacted. And I'm curious to know if the city council is making any arrangements or engaging in any planning about what to do should monies be reduced to take care of our local community. So, thank you.
So thank you for your comments. This is a time that's just for comments to us, it's not a dialogue time. So if you could provide your contact information so we could get back to you on that.
That would be great. Do I do that on the paper?
That'd be great, if you could do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide public comment?
Good evening. I'm Judy Cold. I'm here as the president of Downtown Pullman Association. I would like to remind the council that we are now a designated community in the Main Street Program, which is a four-point model for place-making and economic development. As a 501(c)(3), we have now launched our annual campaign. It's a three-year campaign, and as a designated community, we are now eligible for any BNO or public utility tax-paying entity in the state of Washington to donate to the Downtown Pullman Association and receive a credit against your next year's tax liability in the amount of 75% of what you give to Downtown Pullman Association. So basically, the time is now for our local businesses to help us help downtown. And with the lovely renovation of downtown, we now have a beautiful blank slate to build upon. We have seen some closures, so we definitely want to stop that trend and help our businesses grow and thrive and attract new businesses. So we will be back next month with an update on the status of our campaign, but we just wanted to enlist the council's support and make sure that you guys all know that this is out there. It's really important, the first quarter of the calendar year, the state ring fences the amount for each community to participate equally in the tax credits that are available. After April 1st, those ring fences go away, and it's a first-come, first-served basis. So it's really important that if people want to pledge to our campaign, they do it now so we can reserve those tax credits for Pullman. And then our community designation will be assessed on June 30th. So the stronger our campaign looks, the more likely we will be able to continue at this designated level, which is really important for us to be able to bring back tax dollars to Pullman for use in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide comment? Yes, go ahead, Bobby.
Okay, I just, Bobby Ryder, Downtown Pullman Association, I just want to give you a recap of some of the things that we've been working on. We have a beautiful buildings campaign. This involves the Pullman Civic Trust to, they've been helping, they put a call-out to all their members to contribute toward creating a micro grant-type of program to help our businesses. Once the trees went away, there was a little bit of touch-up that needed to happen, and so that's been going well. We've also applied to Anovia for an Anovia grant to also do a beautiful, continue the Beautiful Buildings Campaign, and the more money we get, the more we can do. And then also to the Addis Meter Group. So we'll see how those go. Again, the BNO tax credit program, we're working a lot on that. Please pledge by March 31st, because that's where we get the greatest benefit. Promotions is coming up. There's going to be a QB Classic and a Crimson and Gray Pub Crawl on April 11th, and the Bengali New Year Group with Mayla organizing it will be on that Saturday, April 12th, with a food festival. And then we have WSU interns that we're working with that have just been fantastic. Social media intern, we've had a data collection intern and updating our data, and then we're beginning to work with the WSU analytics, data analytics people, and hope to get a student intern on board. And finally, we have $10,000 that have been purchased in tables, chairs, and umbrellas, and I beseech you that you please allow us to use that furniture in the downtown to help activate that space. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide public comment? This time is time for, opportunity for council member comments. With that, council member Fagerin.
Thank you. My only comment is thanking all the voices here today, especially those who are fighting for economic policies, not only for Pullman, but our state and nation. So thank you, especially our small businesses.
Councilmember Parks.
No comment.
Councilmember Guido.
No comment.
Councilmember Weller.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to comment on, not only here, but many people who have talked to us about how do we respond to what's occurring in the federal arena, not react, but respond. I think, as we know, I brought up the topic, was it, about two weeks ago, that we as a city need to gather as much data as we can and discuss how it's impacting our entire community. I sent a letter to Marie Demkowsky from Pullman Chamber, as well as Paul Kimmel from Avista, and the mayor was on that as well. I've already shared last time, but I think it bears mentioning again. I sit on the Institutional Biosafety Committee up at WSU, where they conduct a lot of experiments dealing with disease, and much of their funding comes from NIH. That no longer is in existence for them. In addition, working closely with not only the veterans in our area, but also agriculture. Last time, I had explained how there were five scientists who were no longer going to be employed at the USDA. In addition, there's nine techs that were no longer going to be employed. Each of those scientists would have contributed, you know, they make about $87,000 at the base end. Each technician at the base end was about $53,000. And that's only one department. This is going to hit home, and it already is. And the longer we wait and think about how we're going to just weather this without any impact, I fear the worst it's going to be for us. We see it at WSU. So I do think, and I will reiterate, that the topic of how the federal decisions are impacting our community is extremely important. We've already seen VA is being hit. I talked to a military friend of mine, and this is real. This is no longer the other Washington. This is right here. This is our Washington also. So with that, I will be quiet, but I felt it was important to reiterate. Thank you.
Councilmember Delara. Next item on the agenda is council member, future regular agenda requests. Is there any council member that has a future agenda request? Seeing none, on to community comments on final action items. This agenda item is the second of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials on any agenda item that the city council will take final action at this meeting. Excluded items where public comment was previously accepted. Final action items include the consent agenda and regular agenda items. This agenda item for comments is not to exceed 30 minutes in total. Comments be directed to the mayor or the city council as a body. No comment should be directed to an individual council member. Is there anyone who'd like to provide comments on any final action items? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. And first up, we have Ned Warnock, who is the chairperson for the Historic Preservation Commission. This is our opportunity to hear from the different commissions. So with that, Chairperson Warnock.
Mayor and council, thank you for having me. Am I, am I, okay, all right. Again, thank you. I was here in October, and I joked with Community Development Director RJ Lot that it took me 12 years to get here the first time, and here I'm back again in five, six months. So I apologize if you're tired of hearing from me. So quick recap, the Historic Preservation Commission has the distinction of being the only commission that actually has legal restrictions or guidelines as to who can serve on it. We are fortunate with our current membership that they are very long-tenured, and I hope that will continue. I enjoy every member of our commission. In addition to myself, John Anderson, Phil Grun, Jennifer Hamilton, Anita Hornbeck, Allison Mantratolo, and Matthew Root all serve as commissioners. And then we are very ably assisted and supported by Ariel Maderos. The Assistant City Planners work as our staff support. Our role is actually set forth by the Pullman City Code and is spelled out in the Pullman City Code under Chapter 16. I will not put you through reading this, but our main purpose is to advise and review matters that have to do with historical properties in the city of Pullman. What that boils down to in terms of the tasks that we do on a regular basis, we'll review applications for properties that wish to be listed on the local register. We will review requests to alter properties that are already on the local register. We'll review properties that are on the local register for the benefit of a special tax valuation, which in its very simplest and probably oversimplified terms is, a property owner can have their property taxes frozen for a period of 10 years if they are making improvements to a registered property. We are also here to advise city planning staff on matters that deal with historic resources, and we can adopt and pursue historic preservation goals consistent with city policy and ordinances. This past year, we were able to accept the listing of the Gould House at 920 Northeast D onto our register. In addition to that, we also acted on special tax valuation and approved the Drucker House's request for that special tax valuation. That house is located at 965 Northeast B Street. We monitored two other properties that were also benefiting, previously approved and benefiting from special tax valuation to ensure that they were maintaining the properties. We approved two certificates of alterations to existing properties on the registration, on the historic register. We reviewed and commented upon two demolition permits and two site plan reviews for possibly historically significant properties. That input is then provided to city staff for their action in other ways on those properties. One of the highlights for me is every year, we conduct a historic walking tour. This past year, it was on Maple Street, so to avoid the downtown construction, we visited or we had docents, each one of the commissioners took a property along Maple Street on College Hill, and we stood there for two hours and talked to passerby's that happened to be taking the tour about those properties. In addition to that, John Anderson is very passionate about this, and he was able to actually organize a special walking tour for the senior citizens group, and so he conducted that. We do have a goal, and hopefully next year when I make this presentation, we're looking at actually expanding that to school groups. So we're in contact with Lincoln Middle School right now, trying to work with one of their clubs to be able to expand that. So the walking tours are one of our best ways of actually doing public outreach. It's fun for us, and it's fun for the participants to learn a little bit about Pullman history. In addition to that, Commissioners Grun and Mantratolo were able to attend the Places Conference, which was a professional development opportunity for them, a learning opportunity held in Walla Walla, and so they were able to come back and present to the commission on things that they learned there. And then, in an effort to continue our user-friendly outreach to try to get more properties on the historic register, we did update and streamline our nomination package for that. I do want to reiterate, just anyone who's afraid that the Historic Preservation Commission is going to show up in the middle of the night and list your property, that is not the case. This is an entirely voluntary program, and we're not out there to try to restrict people's property rights in this. This is something where we're trying to celebrate historic preservation and pull people to historic preservation as opposed to pushing them. I do have one last plug. The image that we have up there is the Historic Preservation Commission's project that we are trying to, we have achieved getting it on the CIP program. We're still lacking funding. I do need to, I do wish to report that it is already the recipients of donations that the city is holding in their accounts for this, and so there is private money that is focused on this, not enough to get the project started, but this is an opportunity for the city to celebrate its history. The red street roads up around the Simpson Methodist Church are both a nationally historic register and locally registered property, and so this little brick pedestal is an opportunity for us to showcase both of those plaques. Those plaques are in existence right now. I think they're in Allison Mantratolo's basement, but we would really like to be able to get those out and in the public view. In addition, that is a lovely little downtown view from the bluff overlooking the railroad tracks and on into downtown, and so a great opportunity on one of the spur bike paths for you to set up a resting place. If you just have a few spare, you know, dollars in the CIP account, go ahead and direct them in this direction. Thank you, and I'd be happy to accept any questions.
Thank you very much, Ann. I appreciate you being able to adjust your slides. One of the things in the initial slides were presented were the goals of which are coming, will come before council, either the next meeting or the meeting after. So with that, any questions? Councilmember Fagerin.
More of a comment, just thank you, Ned, for coming back and not waiting 12 years for, to come to city council again. Something I'm just really excited about, what you said is just- What you said is just the partnership with the local schools. Was that Lincoln Middle School, I heard, or?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's just a great partnership and just that Pullman has so much history that the students there and all the schools need to learn about. So thank you.
And, and I do want to thank you again. And also, we have, next year come is the quintessential of the United States. And so there will be a number of opportunities around the state and hopefully in Pullman for us to, to recognize some of the heritage and historic pieces of Pullman, so.
I know that you'll find this a surprise, but I'm old enough to remember the bicentennial, which was, was a formative time in my life. And so I'm looking forward to celebrating that sort of thing again.
I, I, I agree. I spent, I spent two weeks in Washington DC on the, during the bicentennial. I actually worked, I had an opportunity to work there for two weeks, and it was fabulous. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation, Library Director Dan Owens for the 2024 Annual Library Report.
All right, good evening, council. Thank you for having me here. I am Dan Owens. I'm the Library Services Director for the City of Pullman at Neo Public Library, and I'm here to quickly go through our 2024 annual report with these slides and answer any questions you may have. Last year, when I was here, I said 2023 really marked the full restoration of services, programs, and attendance and utilization of library services. So we had an enormous amount of growth from, in 2023. And then we continued to steadily grow throughout 2024. But first, I'll talk about expenditures, get the money out of the way here. And we were just a little over a two million dollar budgeted in 2024. Our actual was about 1.9, so we were about eight percent under budget. We had about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars returned to general fund end of year. And we were 6.9% of the general fund. For many years, the library has bounced between about six and seven and a half percent of the general fund. We're right about the same for twenty-five and twenty-six in the council-approved budget as well. So right in line there, apologies. I will note a few things here. Like most departments, we are about sixty-seven percent wages and benefits. So most people are pricey and worth every penny, of course. About 12% of our, our budget goes to interfund charges, which is almost primary, all IT and buildings, without which we could not be open. And then you get to 7% materials, which is a little less than many public libraries aim for that 10% or so, but it's still enough to provide excellent service to the people of Pullman. And then the other one I'll note, for many departments, that 5% is insurance. Insurance keeps going up every year for every department. So last year it was 4%. Next year it'll be, I think, in the six to 7% range. That is, the cost of insurance across the entire city is, is going up there. There we go. We're going, apologies, let me click that again. Okay, here's our 2024 by the numbers. Once again, 2024 by almost every single service metric was our busiest year ever. The only metric that declined a little bit was our number of library visits there at the top center. That is counted by a little electrophoto counter that I have my doubts about the reliability of that counter. But last year was our biggest ever, and we are looking, in terms of that library visits number, and we are looking at finding something new to replace that little photovoltaic counter. But all of our other Wi-Fi sessions, library cards, meeting room uses, those are tracked and very reliable, and we were at, again, the highest numbers we've ever been at. I would particularly highlight like that 70 average public Wi-Fi clients per day. Last year, that was 57, so that's a pretty decent percentage increase. These numbers kind of really back up our anecdotal observations, which is there's nowhere to sit at 4:00 PM in, in part of, parts of our library. And also our thirteen thousand four hundred and eighty-five print jobs. We are the only place left in Pullman to print items at all. Small items, we're the only place to fax. We're the only place to do a lot of different things now. That averages out to forty or fifty print jobs per day. So we are, we are cranking through, and it does make us a little bit of money as well. I'll continue on to our youth services and to our, sorry, my notes here. There we go. Nearly twenty-five thousand people engaged with the youth service program, some many, many times. That's an 8% increase, and nearly a hundred and ninety thousand youth services items were checked out. You can see just some pictures here of the many partnerships that Rachel Ritter does and in leading her staff. We have Palouse Pathways, we have the Robotics Club, United Way, Alpha New Multicultural Society. We have many boo-soons, as they said at Halloween. Rachel visits 12 classrooms per month, I believe, at the moment. It might be higher. So youth services, once again, really killing it throughout 2024. Our next slide should be adult services, but it's taking its time here. There we go. Almost 200,000 items checked out, a 6% increase. Over 2,000, a 39% increase in our adult program attendance. Again, our highest ever. You see a few things there. We have some community presentations. We have our 2024 Summer Reading Challenge, which we had many hundreds of submissions and prizes included, downtown business gift certificates, things of that nature, funded by Friends of Neo Public Library. We also have our new language learning collection, which includes many foreign languages, as well as English as a second language. And then the shelving, you can see on the bottom of that shelving picture some tilt shelving that we kind, we got to really fit in there. As you know, we did a 2023 community survey, and one of the biggest priorities, that the biggest priority was a larger collection, and it's very hard for us to do that in the current facility, but we look for creative ways to do so. So we found some tilt shelving that people can still get to, and it fits right underneath that shelving. And Menelana and her team put that in, along with our circulation and reference staff. Our two other departments are circulation and reference and technical services, and we could not do what we do without them. Circulation and reference also conducts much of our general outreach, so they go to the farmer's market, Lentle Fest. They go to basically everything they go to, WSU Get Involved Fair. They make every new library card. Last year, we made 2,170 new library cards, which is an incredible number for our community, our size. But we have a lot of turnover in this community, and we're very proud that the library is often one of the first places that new residents interact with as part of the city of Pullman. There's quite a few staff members listed there. Some of those have moved on and retired, but we've got some new ones in there. I just wanted to get all their names in there. Our technical services staff added almost 7,000 new physical items to our collection last year, which is awesome. A hundred and fifty thousand items checked in and shelved. You can double that, they're checked out. So about thirty, in the 20,000 to 30,000 items per month are handled by our staff. And particularly our 10 circulation and reference desk staff, who I didn't have room on the slide for them, but they are incredible, and they provide outstanding customer service to our community. Moving forward into our projects this year and next steps. I apologize. I'm hitting the button.
Are you just clicking on them individually?
Well, I was doing that. I will just go ahead and start on this. We are on a library software replacement project. That was part of CIP, approved in CIP last year, so we are really grateful for that. And if we get to slide up here, you're going to see a picture of an archaic software system and a newer software system. Not only does that going to make our training, everything will be easier. The online catalog will be better for the patrons. I guarantee you, everything will be better, and it will save us about $20,000 a year. It is a much less expensive option, and it will be a significant improvement. So that is scheduled to wrap up May 19th and go live, and we are really looking forward to that, and it's really great. This is our, our kind of wrap-up. Last year, I talked about our new service desk, which was built by Renaissance Woodworking here. And Friends of Library funded that. The Friends of Library funded a small project to close in the wall and build a whole, essentially a new wall behind that circulation desk. And this year, very soon, is going to wrap up with rehanging the library's art collection. You can see that on the bottom. The Friends have purchased some very nice art hanging hardware. Buildings team is going to install that hardware very soon, and we will be back with our longtime art collection, much of it hanging behind that. So that is photoshopped. They, Megan Otto, our, our staff member did an excellent job, but it will look like that very soon. So we are excited about that. And then our big project, after our library software project, is another capital project funded this year, which is a library services and facility assessment. So a community needs assessment that will involve a steering committee, significant stakeholder input and community input, and then assessing those needs versus our facility, our current facility, and any recommendations for a future facility. That is being conducted by Burke, you can see there, who did the library's comprehensive plan, or sorry, the city's comprehensive plan last revision, along with SHKS Architects. They have done many, many community engagement and library projects around the state. So we are super excited about that. We expect the public phase of that engagement to start this summer. And then last, I will just note, again, our management team, who make all of this possible. And then our trustees, who oversee the library. Donna Potts is our current chair. And then the rest of them, you can see up there, including Ann Parks, our ex-officio city council member, who we appreciate monthly. Thank you. And with that, I will take any questions you may have.
So for questions, and Ann, would you like to lead it off?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Dan. And I just want to mention a few things to the community. First of all, people don't often think of the library after their children get out of primary school. And I would encourage all of our residents to just walk into the library and look around. There are books and DVDs and all sorts of media, all sorts of help. And again, in these perhaps trying times that may be upon us, it is a welcome refuge to just go in and enjoy everything at no cost and with a friendly and knowledgeable staff. Second, I'd like to point out the role as you, if you, well, if you, if you're able to read the, the annual report, the Friends of the Library make a lot of these things that Dan talked about possible. They're the nonprofit fundraising arm. They have an in-library book selling area where you can go buy books, for used books for, I don't know, a dollar. It's, it's very reasonable. They have an annual book sale. But they really, really have a lot to do with what the library is able to offer our community that is not part of the city budget. So again, if you're looking for a nonprofit to support, Friends of the Library would be really a good choice. I also want to mention that being a community center like our library is, part of that is that they do so much, and Dan touched on some of it, the outreach. So they, we have staff that goes to schools. They do home delivery of books for folks who can't get out. They take books to the care centers once a week for residents to exchange and check out. They have programming, and particularly something, a sector that we don't often think about are the youth and the teens in our, in our community. And our library has really stepped up in the last few years with youth and teen activities and programming at the library and out in the community. And it's some of the most highly attended programming outside of the summer reading series for the small children. So something, again, for people who might not think about the library after their kids are, get into middle school or high school. But there are Lego clubs and anime and all sorts of things that happen there for our youth. And finally, when our downtown, when we're talking about the DPA having events and other entities having events, the library is an integral part of this because they make themselves available for people to go into for refuge from weather. There are restrooms that can be, that are usually made available. They're a big help at the Lentle Festival. That's where we check in all the parade entries, and people can change in the restrooms. And with the, still the, the main library being closed. But the library is a big part of the gateway to our downtown, and so yet another reason to, to go check it out. Thank you.
Councilmember Weller?
The mayor knew that I wanted to comment without me even raising a hand. That should say something. Well, Dan, as always, it's absolutely awesome. And you already know, I grew up there, you know? Both parents working, I mean, that's where I went. I gotta say, it is absolutely awesome. And the letters on the side of the building, finally.
Thank you.
Just are amazing. And I will say, I, I always say it's a, you know, community jewel, but, but it's really a cornerstone of the community and of the downtown as well. And it's interesting because whenever I travel to county, city, wherever, I always have to look at their library. And it never comes up to what Neo Public Library has. And it's always been welcoming, it's always been open. I just gotta say, you know, and we've already talked about after this, I won't say anymore about, but when Joanna left, you know, there was this, how is it? Yeah, and of course, you have just been amazing. Your leadership, the ideas, we're always on the cutting edge. There's always new programs. I mean, you know, everything from LinkedIn Learning, you know, I, Naomi was asking about, I, I want to learn, you know, more about Excel, you know, things like LinkedIn Learning, the library. God, I'm set up with that. There's Gail, all the periodicals for all the different. People don't realize exactly how much is there. They take it for granted. You know, I'll just share this, this little story. My mom got on this kick about watching Puerto. And, you know, I said, Mom, they have that down at the library. They have DVDs from, you know, Britain? Yes, yeah. So I was going in every single week to get a new Puerto. It is phenomenal when you talk to people and they say, oh, I have to pay for this subscription and that subscription. And it's like, have you looked at the library? Do you have a library card? Oh, no, right there. So, I mean, there's no que, I don't have any questions. I just have praise and gratitude for what you're doing, what the staff is doing. And I know as you're looking towards the future and, and how do we, you know, what's the next step? And I know there was a visioning process a while ago of, you know, this was probably 10 years ago. The library needs another floor. The library needs an extension. And with the amount of foot traffic you've had and everything, you've done so amazing, and I'm, I'm just looking forward to that other floor or, you know, growing even further because it is the cornerstone of Pullman. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, that's very kind.
Any other comments or questions? If not, thank you very much, Dan. As you can tell, and as you've communicated, the library is very well-used and is, is very loved, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item is our consent agenda. The items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion to city council without separate discussion. That, I'd entertain a motion to read the consent agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That, Thad O'Sullivan, if you could read our consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First item is a motion to dispense with the reading of the regular meeting minutes of February 11, 2025, and approve them as submitted. Two is a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, number 2011-29551 through 2011-2961, totaling $209,543.73. Item three, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, number 2011-29612 through 2011-29658, totaling $247,000. totaling $247,235.32. Item four, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, number 2011-29659 through 2011-29672, electronic transfers numbered 105 through 114, and electronic payroll transfers totaling $1,752,740. Item five, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, number 2011-29673 through 2011-29739, totaling $323,929.70. Item six is a motion to approve administrative services contract with the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport for 2025. Item seven, a motion accepting the quote from Lardal, Lardal, Inc. for advanced medical training equipment through a Sourcewell contract 011-822-LAE. Item eight, ratified change order, order number one to the Tank 12 contract. Item nine is Resolution R-07-25, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the finance director to execute a project prospectus in local agency agreement for the Arterial Streets Resurfacing 2026 project. Item 10, Resolution Number R-08-25, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the finance and administrative services director to execute a local agency agreement supplement number two and an updated project prospectus for the citywide intersection improvement project. And finally, item 11, Resolution Number R-09-25, a resolution authorizing the mayor and, and the finance and administrative services director to execute a local agency agreement supplement number one and an updated project prospectus for the citywide pedestrian crossing improvements project.
Do any councilmembers, does already have any items removed from the consent agenda to be discussed separately? Seeing none, uh, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
With that, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Consent agenda passes, on to our regular agenda. Uh, and, uh, up we have Clayton Forsman, our deputy public works director, uh, related to accepting a contracting bid. With that, Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. Tonight's item is a resolution to award the de-camp facility contract to the lowest responsible bidder. Uh, as a brief reminder for those, uh, present, um, here and watching from home tonight, the de-camp facility contract consists of the construction of a new de-camp facility on city property located at 800 Northwest Guy Street. This is across from the city's maintenance and operations yard. The facility is needed to properly manage the liquid and solid waste that's generated from our city vector trucks and street sweepers. Bids for the project were received and opened on February 20th. We had eight bids. Uh, each bid was reviewed thoroughly, and the lowest responsible bidder was determined to be POW Contracting, and they're based out of Pasco, Washington. Their bid total was $1,132,000, so, let me start over. Including your packet, you will find the bid results for each of those eight bids, along with our engineer's estimate. As you can see, the low bid is well below the engineer's estimate. Following an in-depth review, staff determined that the submitted prices are reflective of the actual price to complete the project and that the low bidder, POW Contracting, is qualified to perform the work. This project is partially funded by Department of Ecology grant, and that grant will fund 85% of the total construction costs. The remaining local match will come from both the stormwater fund and the sewer budget of the utility fund. Construction is expected to be completed by this fall. The resolution before you tonight has been prepared to award the de-camp facility contract to the low bidder, POW Contracting. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be glad to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Clayton, I had a, a question. This is, this is more, I think, for determining a bid. Do we take into account any past performance of the contractor? Because I know we've sometimes run into some challenges.
Yes, we do. We have a qualifications of bidder form that's required with the bid. This contractor we've actually worked with on two previous city projects, both successful. One was the Fuel Island in 2017, and then the Tank 11 and Booster 10 project in 2019.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Vajerin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Clayton, for being here. Appreciate the information you presented. Um, just a kind of a general question, which you touched based on it briefly, just the, kind of the difference between the estimate and, uh, the potential, um, uh, contractor who we're gonna award the bid to. Um, I see that in the line item, the de-camp facility, that, that, um, there's a big difference there. And my question is, is that just around materials or labor?
I think it's a combination. There's a couple of things going for us here. Um, so our consultant prepared the engineer's estimate. They've done quite a few de-camp facilities in the state of Washington. Uh, they're basing their engineer's estimate on past projects. We bid this at the opportune time, and we had a lot of competition. Uh, POW actually talked to me after, right after the bid opening, and they really needed some work, so they gave us their best number. Um, and so based on our history with them, we feel very good about it. But it does appear that prices are coming down some. We had a bid opening today, and we had very good results. So I think hopefully, um, with the market, and we've had so many years of inflation and, and people raising their prices, we're starting to kind of see maybe some, some positives, I guess you could say. So, so we're encouraged.
Awesome. Good news all around, thank you.
Yeah.
Any others? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd entertain a motion for Resolution R-1025.
Move to approve Resolution Number R-1025.
Second.
Second. With that, Thad, if you could read the resolution, please?
Yes. Uh, Resolution Number R-10-25, a resolution accepting the bid of POW Contracting for the de-camp facility project and authorizing the execution and delivery of the contract for said project.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Are you sure it's not pow? We all want that. Okay. Uh, at this time, uh, we're gonna go into executive session, pursuant to RCW 4230-110-1B, to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would be considered like, likelihood to increase the price. RCW, uh, 4230-110-1I, to discuss with legal counsel representing the city council matters relating to agency enforcement action or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency potential litigation concerning, one, litigation that has been specifically threatened to which the agency, the governing body, or member acting in official capacity is or likely become a party; two, litigation that the agency reasonably believes may be commenced by or against the agency, the governing body, or member acting in its official capacity; or three, litigation or legal risks of a potential action or current practice that the agency has identified when public discussion of the litigation or, or legal risks are likely to result in an adverse legal or, or financial consequence to the agency. Uh, the executive session is expected to last approximately 15 minutes. If it becomes necessary to extend the executive session, someone will return to announce anticipated additional times later for the council. The council does not expect to take any action following the executive session. Uh, and we will start the, the executive session, uh, in five minutes, so it's 6:33.
Imagine yourself in a new Toyota. 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 Are you ready to see your brand on? We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We'll be extending the City Council for another five minutes in executive session. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes. We're extending the City Council executive session for five more minutes.[1296.00][1296.00][applause][1386.00][1386.00][music]
Yeah, it's still, I'm still going back and forth with the lawyers. And, um, okay. Um, I'm asking if you have a last word again.
That's what you're asking.
Okay, yes. I'm reconvening the City Council at this time. I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Yes, yes.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor who can vouch and say nay.
Aye.
Repose, we're opposed.[1763.00][1763.00][laughter]
So is that kind of through, um, or?
Hey, are we off, are we not broadcasting anymore?